It's gonna work out. Alright, so before we get started today, so happy Friday. This is the ICND two study session three. First thing I want to do is talk to the people that are here for the first time. Why am I doing this? Because I want to help. There are a ton of people that are on a journey to get their CCNA before it expires in February of 2020 and totally possible. One of the biggest, the biggest, it should say what? Yes, yes, it should say one of eight. You're in the right place. So one of the biggest things that we're getting questions on CBT Nuggets, you know, new CCNA. Is should I wait for the new one? And the answer is no. If you can get your CCNA now, do it. For a whole variety of reasons, I'm not going to bore you with all of that because there's enough YouTube videos and content on that for now. But this, that's, that's why I'm doing this is to help. So tell your friends I'm doing this. So Jake just asked me the schedule for January and I think it's going to be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, all the way through. But I'm still, I'm still solidifying all of that to make sure that that'll work with the, the schedule I've got. So, so that's, that's what we're doing. Second thing I want to do is can you do me a favor? I want to know. And I'd love you to chat it in at some point. So at any point during this presentation, chat it in. What do you plan to do when you get your CCNA? I just, I, that I just, I want to know that because what I, what I want to do. You're, you're going to hear a little bit of, of my, my whole end goal is I want to help. What is Jeremy about helping people? That's, that's what I do. And I think those of you that have taken my training for a while know that about me. I love to help people and I, one of the, the gaps that I've seen is I see people get their CCNA and they're like, I got it. And they post the picture and all that. It's great. And then they don't know what to do from there. And I'm, I'm wanting to fill that gap. And the answer isn't go for more certs. It's too easy because you know, the certs, the certs are a mechanism to an end. What's your end? I want, I want to know that. So think about that at some point. Chat it into the, chat it into the chat and go from there. Sarah, please, please, please save, save, save that. Alright, so that being said. Let's, uh, let's dive into. Lost my train of thought. Let's dive into our study sessions. So. Right here. Here we go. Here we go. So this is where we left off yesterday. We were, we were talking about two, two routers that are. Two routers that are communicating and you know, setting up a chat session. And, and establishing network communication. We're trying to figure out what was the best thing to do between them. That's where we left off. I'm not going to go through that one again. And in all honesty, that question probably will fade away quickly from the new CCNA material because everything is moving away from the serial based WAN connections, right? So, so that being said, let's, let's jump into the next, the next question. And so what we'll do. If you haven't joined the game, please feel free to. I've got the, I've got the. What, what is that thing? The Aha! Slides, the, the little pull slides there. I'll read this and then we'll kick it off. Ready? Here we go. Partial output is displayed as an exhibit of a result of what iOS command? Here we go. Alright, good, good, good. Alright, so partial output displayed in this exhibit below is a result of what command? The answer should be C. This is actually a standard HSRP configuration. Let's check it. Make sure we're good. Standard HSRP configuration. You can see this is the group. It shows how many times the state has changed in terms of flipping over between, between two routers. Now, again, let me, and, and let me grab my, grab my pen. See if I'm, seeing if I'm writing here. Nope. Got to reboot that. So. HSRP allows you, it should have been called, in my opinion, hot standby default gateway. Because that's, that's what it's there for is the ability to have two routers act as a single exit point for, we'll just say a client. So if this guy, let's just say this is the 10 dot 1 dot 1 dot 0 subnet, right? This guy might be dot two, this guy might be dot three, both of these going off to the internet. And HSRP lets you create a virtual IP address, a dot one, right? So, so that is what, what, what HSRP does. We, our client can point to that. One of them will be an active, one of them will be a standby. This is how we verify what's going on. So just by typing in show standby, we can see that we have this virtual IP address. That would be this guy right here that's being defined. You can see the active virtual MAC address, which it does generate a MAC address for these clients to use. Otherwise you end up with ARP cache issues because it will, it would remember, it would cache what the MAC address for this IP is. And whenever it changed, that would be a problem. So, so this is how we can verify that, that HSRP is all good. Good, good, good. Next up, here we go. Next question. Which switch will be selected as the root bridge by spanning tree protocol? Alright, which switch would be selected as the root bridge by spanning tree protocol? Likely the one with the lowest bridge ID. Spanning tree is actually a discussion that we had a little while back. Oh no. Is that Knox? Knox just got in there. Spanning tree is a, a discussion that we had actually in another session. By default, all the switches will try and have a little war here for who will be the root bridge? Who will be considered the center of the network? By default, they all have the same priority, which is 32,768. That's a good number to remember. Dot, and they all have different MAC addresses. So their MAC addresses is appended, their MAC address is appended to that. The one with the lowest bridge ID will actually win. And that it become the root bridge, become the center of the network and, and all of the, the people will, will be pointing to that as the, the best pass around the network and block any redundant links. Now, when I first learned spanning tree, I always wondered, why did they make it the lowest? Because the, the higher, the newer switches would have higher MAC addresses. So I thought, why, why would they want the oldest switch to become the root bridge? And the reason for that is because they're after stability. They don't want every single time you click a new switch into the network, it's something be like, oh, root bridge election, you know? And everybody points to that as the root bridge. They want it to be stable. So for that, they chose the lowest bridge ID. Good, 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 good. Alright, so. Next question. Get my, get my clicker right here. You execute the ping command from a host, but the router doesn't have a path to its destination. Which of the following ICMP message types will a client receive from the router? Alright, the answer on this one is ICMP destination unreachable. So fly by discussion on this. This is, holy smokes, they can change my, my pen size. Hang on, clear that off. This is, let me, let me, uh, let's go red. When you've got a router connected, let's just say it's got a connection here to, we'll just say network one, network two. And, and then over here, it's got a connection to network three, right? You've got a computer on network one that says, hey, I want to get to network four. It sends it to the default gateway. This guy, because it's directly connected, will respond back with exactly this ICMP destination unreachable. And that's where you'll actually see it in your, in your ping responses. Like if you're trying to ping, it'll say destination unreachable, destination unreachable. It'll, it'll, it comes across really fast. Now, if you've got another router, let's just say you've got another route over here. He's connected to network five, right? And let's say, let's say that, um, let me just give a scenario here. You've got a client right here, right? He pings, he, he sends a ping to network four, right? This guy, let's just say this is router one. This guy has a default route, 0 dot 0 dot 0 dot 0. He's saying, hey, I'm going to send everything right here to router two, right? So when he pings network four, it comes, hits this router. He's like, okay, I don't know where network four is, but I'm configured to send everything here. Gets to here, he looks at his routing table and he does not have that route. He will send back exactly what we have here, ICMP destination unreachable, right? And as soon as he does that, this router gets it and drops it. Here's, here's my question for you. Chat it in if you've got, if you've got a thought. What does this guy, if, if you're, you're doing a ping, what does it display in the command prompt? What, what comes back? When, when, when he's trying to ping that destination at network four? Any ideas? I'm staring at the, staring at the chat. I don't see anybody. Then this is a great discussion. And by the way. This is, this is actually, you're, you're, you're close, you're close. Actually, it'll say, request timed out. And you'll want to know that because the difference, so if you see destination unreachable coming back from, for, that means that the router that you're directly connected to does not have a route. That, that can help you with your troubleshooting. This guy, that would tell you this has no route. If you're getting request timed out, that means the router that you connected to made an attempt and sent it somewhere. And maybe that or some further router down the line didn't have that route. And that's why we get the request timed out because that destination unreachable does not pass through routers. It will die at the first router that it gets to. Thus you get those, those long delays on your ping responses. I think that's the, the dot, 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 dot that is going across there. So that is really helpful to know for your troubleshooting. Alright, next question. Question 24. Look at the network diagram. Which switch ports will be in a forwarding state? This one's going to take you a little longer. Think about this one. Alright, I know, I know some of you are still, still waiting to answer the question. While you guys are waiting, I'm going to have the discussion on this. So this is a typical spanning tree protocol question and one that you would want to be able to answer for ICND two, okay? So, so the first thing, so it's saying which, which switch ports will be in a forwarding state? So it's saying essentially walk through the spanning tree process. Well, spanning tree, the first step of the process is to pick the root bridge. So I'll just put pick the root. And how does it do that? And this was actually one of the previous questions, the lowest bridge ID. I'll put BID, lowest bridge ID. The bridge ID is a combination of the priority, which in this case isn't in the picture, and the MAC address. So we look here and we go, okay, which MAC address is lower? Both start with zero and then we've got eight. We've got B. Okay, so hexadecimal, you've got zero through nine, A through F, right? So, so eight is technically lower than B. So this guy immediately becomes the root. Boom, one piece of the puzzle solved and, and one, a bunch of answers eliminated because the root bridge always has designated ports, right? DP, DP designated ports, they're there. So, so I look and I go, okay, which will be in a forwarding state? I would go, let's see, switch A, that guy. And switch A, actually, that's, if, if time is of the essence, which, which the exam is, that would answer the question. But let's, let's go one step further because, because I want you to catch how spanning tree is going. What about the other ports? What happens to them? Well, switch B is going to go through its algorithm and it's going to say, okay, I'm not the root. So how do I pick, pick the ones with the, with, you know, which, which interfaces should be forwarding? Goes through three step process. And this is what we talked about in the last session or a couple of sessions ago. First thing is it's going to say, I'm going to pick the path with the lowest cost. If you're taking notes, two costs, you'll want to know, one gigabit per second is a cost of four. A hundred megabits per second is a cost of 19, right? So let's just assume these are both gigabit per second, right? And that would be a cost of four. So it would say, okay, well, the lowest cost is tied, right? So I'm going to fail over to the second one. It says, I'm going to take the path that has the lowest bridge ID. And that works, that works if you've got, let's just say, a situation like this, right? Here's your root bridge. You've got two paths to get there. Both of them are equal cost because we've got a cost of four, 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 right? Four all the way around, right? So, so he goes, okay, that's tied. I'm going to pick, you know, let's just say this is bridge ID A. This is bridge ID B. That one's lower, so I'm going to go that path. Well, in this case, it doesn't break the tie because it's going to the same bridge ID. So at that point, it goes with the lowest port number. Right? So, so I'll just put port nub, port number. So that's where switch B will say, okay, this one will be forwarding. So, so technically, I guess we could say, uh, switch, that, that would be, it's, it only said choose two. But I would say that would be forwarding as well, right? This guy would end up blocked. And, and what, what they might be saying, I wonder, I'm wondering if they're saying, uh, which one is in a, oh, I didn't even see that. Look at that. Look at that, those scoundrels. Bam, bam, I, I, proof in the pudding. Read the full question. There, there we go. That's, that's the answer right there. This guy is forwarding. Man, this, I, I would have total got, totally risked getting that one wrong. So, so, uh, so let's, let's clear off the screen. So lowest port number wins. Let's take a look. This guy, this guy, right? Yeah. Good, good, good. So again, the description walks you through exactly what I just walked you through. Big, big question. And I know spanning tree protocol is one of the toughest topics for people to get. It was the toughest topic for me when I studied CCNA. So that's why I created that whole YouTube video on, on the channel about that. Good. Alright, let's see time check. Okay, 3:25. Let's see how many more we can squeeze in. Next. Oh, I'm, so these ones I skipped because I can't, I can't fit it all on the screen for you guys to, to look at. So let's go 26. You have executed the following command, so blah, in which situations will switch four, or switch 64 create an Ether Channel? Alright, while you guys are still, uh, still thinking of this one, I'll start, I said, and so I'm, I'm, I know some people are still voting. I'm going to start walking through the description while, while you guys are doing that. And by the way, if, if you are just joining us. Question, I, and I see a, a few people that are chatting it in, in the, in the chat. Once you get your CCNA, I'd love to know, what do you plan to do? And again, this, this, this is kind of feeding, I'm thinking a whole new series of stuff that I want to do. What do you plan to do? And, and you know, how do you plan to get there? What, what are your thoughts? Because I, I think I can help there and I want to talk about that. So chat that in at some point during this session. Let me talk about Ether Channel. So Ether Channel is a fun little technology from Cisco that allows you to, and I, I say Ether Channel, the word is, is a Cisco word. Every other vendor in the world calls it a lag, a link aggregation port. So, so a lot to say about this. First off, this can bundle groups of two, four and eight cables. Because without Ether Channel, without lag technology, we just saw it with spanning tree protocol. It'll step on the scene. Just, this was the last question. It'll come in and be like, okay, block, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to kill that port because it causes a loop in the network. Ether Channel allows you to bundle them together again in groups of two, four or eight interfaces together. So, so this right here is, is what it's after. So it says, interface range gigabit Ethernet two slash zero slash one through two. So we're going into a group of interfaces. We're saying switch port mode access, we're assigning them to a VLAN. And then we type in the magical, this is the single command that enables Ether Channel. The magical command, channel group five, and you can make that group number whatever you want, as long as it's the same for both interfaces. Mode, and then you have the option of auto or desirable. Desire, I'll just abbreviate that, right? So, so auto and desirable. This enables PAGP, which is the Cisco proprietary flavor of Ether Channel. That is what negotiates and, and gets that going. Now, if you, if you have both sides, if both sides are set to auto. And by the way, in the, in the real world, I never ever configure auto desirable, all that. Because I've done, I've done this plenty of times. I always make both sides desirable, both sides active. I'll talk about that in a second. Because otherwise there's just too much that can go wrong. But on exams, they love to ask questions because these are easy questions to write, you know? What, which? I've got my son next to me and he's, he's shaking his, because he's like, you're so animated, so animated. So it's such an easy question to write. When you've got the, the auto, the desirable, what happens? So, so in this case, it says, in which of the following situations will switch 64 create an Ether Channel? The others, the other side is set to on. No, that is not correct because that does not negotiate. The other side is set for passive, and that's what I wanted to mention. This is LACP. The industry standard way of doing an Ether Channel. PAGP is great if you've got Cisco switches everywhere. But the industry caught up. They created LACP. And you can enable either one on Cisco. There's really no benefit to either one other than this works with non-Cisco devices, right? So if you've got one side auto, the other side passive, you're not only mixing two states that won't negotiate, but you are, you're, you're, you're mixing protocols. LACP and PAGP are not compatible. The other switch set for desirable mode is what we want. Desirable should match auto, right? It's kind of like an active passive mode. And by the way, active and passwords, passive are the key words that enable the LACP. You never actually say turn on LACP on a switch. You, you just say, channel group five, mode active. And that's what enables it for LACP. So let me clear that off. The answer should be C. There we go. The other side is set for desirable. Good, good, good. Good, good, cool. And I'm just glancing up at the, the chat. Let me, let me just, I'm going to scroll back a little bit because I want to make sure I, I give some time for questions. If you guys are cool, it's Friday. I was going to go a little bit longer. I've got, I've got, how many questions? Two, three, three more questions? I was going to go a little bit longer and just chat with you guys. So just want to scroll back up to see if. Thank you guys for chatting in all the answers to what do you plan to do? You know, go to Disneyland. What do you plan to do when you get your CCNA? Like what, what's your next step? Because I, I really would like to grab all of that. I'd like to start creating some material around that. Practiced it, okay, blah, blah, blah. Okay, good, 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 good. Cool. Alright, well, let's, uh, let's, let's hit on over to the, the next question. Next question, question 27. Which Cisco iOS command is used to view the number of the interior gateway, so EIGRP packets that are sent and received? Alright, I will tell you, by the way, network negotiator, I am right there with you. This gets me every time as well. These kind of questions are dumb. They're just not fair because, because they are, there are questions that on a real router, you would just use the question mark and be like, oh, oh, and you would just try some things. Committing commands to memory is not, not the way to success. And thankfully, I will say on the real exam, most of the time, let me, let me jump back here. Most of the time they don't have these kind of questions. So, so show IP, so I'm looking at it, I'm going, uh, I, I think it's show IP EIGRP traffic. But I would, oh, good. I, I would, if I was on a real router, I would be trying it out. So, so, uh, with Shardo, is it B? Show IP route doesn't show the number of packets that are sent. It actually shows the routing table on there. So, so this, this will actually show how many, you know, hellos, updates, queries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Good, good. Alright, so let's hit question, actually, I'm going to skip to question 29. Again, these, these just fill up the whole screen. So let's go here. Which of the following commands could you use to verify the type of serial cable you are connected to, DCE or DTE? Alright, good, good, good. So, 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 uh, end of the day, this command is show controllers. This, this is, uh, this is one also that will fade from the new CCNA because serial interfaces are fading away. I saw a couple of people chatting it in. That's, that's fine. But join, join in the quiz. That's the little URL you've been seeing go, going a couple of times. And, and let's do the competition. So show controllers, you can see the output of it right here. Show controllers and right there. They'll tell you which end of the cable is connected. And that's one of the things that you'll find on a router. I, I just put all my routers away. But on a router is the two ends of the cable are physically different on a serial connection. Especially in a lab environment where you're doing, they're called serial crossover cables. So knowing which, which one is what, if they're not marked is, is a pretty big deal. So. That said, let's get to question number 30. And this will be our last question of the day. Which of the following is not a characteristic of open shortest path first? Good, good, good. Alright, we have reached the end of this. So, so this is, which of the following is not a characteristic? It is not a Cisco proprietary protocol. It is, or it does, I should say, have an administrative distance of 110. Only, only normal routing protocol better than that is EIGRP. Of course, since Cisco made it, they'll make it their, their favorite one. And BGP external routes will actually beat that. It uses cost as a default metric, which default algorithm for that is actually 100 divided by bandwidth in megabits per second. And that equals cost to OSPF, which is an old algorithm. So you'll want to update that cost and it does support authentication. So, by the way, so let, let, hang on, let's, let me finish my thought here. Check, good, 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 good. So. Couple of things. So first off, uh, our, our, I gotta, I gotta see the, um, oh, where's the, where's the results? Do we have the results? Hang on, let me, let me log in and see if, uh, there we go. So, okay, here's. Oh, it just is coming up. Look at this. Hang on. Do we have, we have a new winner. I'm going to slide this right in. This is my little, my little interface that's been running the quiz. Paulina has dominated the whole time and network geek girl pulls us, pulls ahead. Paulina's like, congratulations. So nicely done. Genie08, Jared GT, network negotiator and Jamie, all making the list. Nice job. And again, this is, this is just, um, this is just fun. And anytime there's a competition, I'm like, yeah, it just makes it more fun. So, um, couple of things, uh, couple of things before we, we wrap up for today. Last, uh, last time we were, we were here, we had a bunch of questions on OSPF. And I was trying to think, how do I, how do I show OSPF? Because obviously OSPF is, is hours of lecture at CBT Nuggets. And I was thinking, how could I show that in a real quick amount of time? On Wednesday of next week, I'm going to do two things. One, I'm going to show you the new labs that we have for the new CCNA because we, the new CCNA course, the CCNA 2020 actually has labs and I'm going to show that to you, what they look like. They're so cool. But in that, I'm actually going to do a lab on OSPF. And that, that, that may be our entire session. I don't know. Or, or it may just be more study questions. So I'm going to walk through an OSPF configuration on multiple devices. That'll be, that'll be, hang on, it is, I just want to make sure I'm not landing on Christmas or something. That'll be next Wednesday, the 18th. So we will do those sessions. That'll be fine. So we'll do that. Because I was trying to think, what would be the best way to, to walk through OSPF? Because that was a real struggle last time. In terms of, so, so chat in questions, I'll hang out for the last few minutes. Any plans on setting up a dedicated Discord service, uh, channel? So, so when we first did that, somebody asked me that. I was like, what's that? This is, this is how out of, right? I'm just, I'm just out of it. So I, I saw Discord and I was like, oh, it's kind of like a public Slack is what it looks like. Or, or public teams, depending on which, which flavor you, you use. I, I saw it. I was like, that could be cool. But I'd be curious, what, what for? Like, like I, I know what it's, I know what it is, but is, would that, how would we use that? Would that be something that would be used in the session or just a general forum chat kind of thing? So I'd be curious on that. Like what, what would we use that for? Network fun, will you make more of these quizzes? It's actually fun. Yes. Yes, yes, yes. So, so I'm trudging through. I already finished the ICND one study and we went through 55 questions. And just as the, the, the whole Twitch world is new to me, so I'm learning as I go. Jake is actually teaching, teaching me a lot as I go. But I was thinking, man, it'd be fun to add the competition because it is. It's, um, it's fun to see, it's fun to, uh, uh, I don't know. It's just fun for me to watch too. So, so, um, yes, I do plan on doing more of these. And yes, Sunstroke, he's Jake. Jake, Jake is awesome. Somebody forget, something on CCNA level? Yeah, trust me. Yeah, for sure. Cool. So let me scroll back a little bit. Feel free to chat any questions. I just saw, we have a Cisco study Discord I found online. That, yeah, that, so on, on, on Discord. That, that's what I was thinking is there's just, there's a lot out there. I saw a network Chuck. He has a Discord channel. And I looked at it and I'm like, what's he using it for? And I'm like, I don't think Chuck is using it. I think he just kind of set it up. And that's what I don't want to do. I don't want to create a Discord channel and just have another thing that sits there. So if, if there's something that would be valuable from that, I'd, I'd love to do it. Other questions? Wish I came earlier. Network fun. Come earlier next time. So I'm doing these at 2:00 PM just because it's, it's 3:00 PM my time. I'm in Arizona time. We got our own time zone and I, you know, try to wrap up the day shortly thereafter. So move to US. Okay, trying to get, oh yeah. So if you're, if you're just arriving, I'd love to hear what you plan to do after you get your CCNA. That's, if you haven't chatted that in, please chat that in before, before you go. Because I'd, I'd really like to know. Congrats, congrats. Good, 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 good. Congrats, congrats, good, 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 good. Okay, yeah, so. So that being said, I don't see any more questions. So, uh, last thing I'll say is, uh, CBT Nuggets, that's, that's where all of this is coming from. They just released, and, and this, this is some fun news for you. The dev net, uh, the Cisco dev net certification, this is the brand new one. The, the cert isn't live yet, it also goes live in late February, just like the new CCNA. But it's this, this certification represents the crossover or the blend between network and, um, uh, and programmability. And again, this, this goes back, I, I had them mentioned last time. I said, I'm so tired of people being like, the network engineer is dead, they're not dead at all. Or AWS means the end of networking, I'm like, good, like, ah, people, people. So, so, um, but dev net does represent the, the progress of our profession in, in one sense. Because if you look at networking, there's been new stuff that has come out, but there's been nothing radical. It's, I mean, it's kind of like one, like, I'm still teaching CCNA stuff, some of the stuff that I taught back in the year 2000. I mean, it just, it just gets faster, you know, there is, it's so. So dev net represents a totally new realm that has been opened, uh, in that, which, which some of that is part of the new CCNA as well. So that came out, um, new CCNA material is going to be announced soon. I haven't, um, I haven't done that. So Paulina looked into the dev net course yesterday, uh, a little bit, really interesting and a bit scary. It is, it is long and it is, uh, it's funny, some of the instructors that you'll see there are, you haven't seen in the Cisco world before. And that's because they are developers that are, uh, crossing into the world of networking. So everybody's doing a little crossover on this. So. So that said, uh, last few questions, is it a good idea for, uh, for dev net to get, get, is it a good idea to go for dev net after getting into CCNA running and switching? No, no, it's not. What, what, so, I know, I was like, oh, it's like that, what is that little snowman on Frozen? So, so, um, have a purpose for dev net. Meaning if you're getting into the world of cloud, if you're getting into the world of network programmability, that's, that's where you want to cross into the dev net world. But for 90% of the world, right, again, dev net, it's kind of like IPv6. In 2003, I was like, IPv6, it's going to take over the world. And, and we're still like, you know, waiting for, for something to happen there. IPv6 is moving, it's just slow. So dev net and all that, it's, it's going to move, network, network stuff will move in that direction. It's just going to take a long time. So have, have a real purpose for where you would use that first. And that, actually, I'm going to write that down. That would be, that would be a good, a good video. Why would I get, why, I'm going to put why dev net? That, that would be a fun one to create. Why do you want to get Cisco dev, or why, why would you even care about getting Cisco dev net certified? Let's see, reactivate, oh, cool, network negotiator, reactivate CBT subscription. Thank you, thank you for that. And by the way, that, that, that's, that's how I can do what I do. So, so appreciate that. Is that IP phone, uh, Ylike? No, no, this is actually, uh, this is actually a Grandstream phone, uh, Grandstream GXP 2140. Long ago, I got into the world of Asterix and Linux and, uh, cloud hosted, uh, voice over IP services. So, so I kind of built my own call manager server, if you will. With the help of a lot of the, the team that I have over at VIA, uh, which is, so we provide hosted IP services. That's one of the phones that, that are doing it. So that's, that's been a lot of fun. Okay, so, uh, last, last couple of questions, will I ever do, network fun? Will you ever do CCIE study sessions? No. The reason why, why I do that is, is, first off, two, two things. One thing that you'll, you'll learn about me and one of the reasons I had, I had, yeah, thank you, thank you. I forgot about that frame geek. Last time I was demonstrating this phone and I completely killed this Twitch session because my computer gets its internet through that phone. But why I wouldn't do CCIE is, is, um, one, I have, I have a real heart for people that are just getting into the network world. That, like, long ago, probably 10 years ago, that, I used to record CCIE courses at CBT Nuggets. And what I found is people there just aren't as genuine. Ah, that's not the right thing to say, no. People, live stream, ah, is it, people, people there are not as hungry. They're not as, um, they're not as, not as fun and not as like, it's not as life impacting as the CCNA. I mean, that's why I asked the question that I did. Is because at the CCNA level, I see such an opportunity to change lives. Like, I'm like, this can launch people. I mean, we just had, I was just at the CBT Nuggets, uh, channel, we have our own internal Slack. And, um, we had a guy who literally chatted in to one of our reps. He said, I was homeless and I found, you know, I found CBT Nuggets, I got into, you know, Jeremy's CCNA class. And now he's like, I have no college degree, I manage 12 sites at blah, blah, blah. And I, I was just like, that is awesome. Like, like that to me, I'm like, like, CCIE study sessions, I'm like, that will make people that are successful even more successful and blessings on them. But I love, I love people that are just getting into this. So that, that's, that's the big reason why, um, why I put a note on the phone, don't touch the phone. So that's why I like, that's why, that's why here I am 20 years later, still teaching CCNA, even though I am CCI, even though I can teach all the advanced stuff. I just, I, this is what I love to do. So. So that being said, cool. Tips are be as neutral vendor as much as possible. That, okay, last, that'll be the last thing I'll, I'll end on. That's actually great. Network fun, uh, your advice on being vendor neutral as possible is great. But know that Cisco is still and will be for a long time the network leader. And by learning Cisco, you know, you have a recognizable credential and you have the foundation to learn any other vendor really fast. I mean, meaning, I, you know, I'm not HP certified, I'm not Juniper certified, I'm not, you know, not, 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 not. I'm Cisco certified and I know, I have no fear of pulling out of, when I pull out yesterday, a force 10 switch. And I'm like, I can figure this out in a matter of minutes. Because it's all the same stuff, just slightly different structures, same, same concept. So, but yes, it is a vendor, a vendor neutral world, there's a lot of blends of stuff. Good. That being said, happy Friday, have a great weekend. And I'll see you next Wednesday with our walkthrough in OSPF configuration lab. Thanks, see you guys.